They can participate in the conversation that we're going to be having about affordable housing and inclusionary zoning. And Lynn and I actually spoke with them last week about some of these ideas. So in terms of the presentation, I'm going to try and incorporate any of the things we talked about. But when it comes time for conversation, I mean, I'm sure they're going to be far more versed than I am on some of these things and can probably help answer some questions. So feel free to ping them with your questions. And also, I mean, we can't forget, we have Art, he also obviously can answer a lot of questions that I probably can't. But for the sake of time, I want to get started because I want to be done by 6:50 for Lynn and John to be able to be prepared for the next meeting. So what we're going to do tonight is I have a little presentation. I want to cover three things. I'm going to talk about, you know, just a quick recap of what we discussed last month for anyone who missed it or just needs a refresher. Then I want to talk about the tools we have available to manage affordable housing. And then lastly, I want to zoom in on one tool in particular that's called inclusionary zoning. And the possibilities that we will, that we could, we could, things we could do with that. So just to get started, Lynn, could you go to the first slide after the title?
Oh, wait, so it's not showing on your screen?
Wait, oh. See the title, I just can't click. Oh, wait, can I click ahead?
No, I got it. So I paused you on my screen. Sorry. There we go. You can see it now.
All right, so as you guys recall, the conversation we've been having is regarding affordable housing. And Art gave us a great presentation last month to kind of introduce the topic. I hope if you took nothing more away from that conversation last month, what you took away is that affordable housing has a very narrow and very regulated definition. And I've included it here in the top bullet in case you need a refresher. Affordable housing by definition are housing units occupied by households paying 30% or less of their annual income, where such income is less than or equal to 80% of the state median income. I think sometimes, I mean, I do it too conversationally casually when you're talking to somebody about affordable housing generally. Sometimes you talk about anything below market rate is affordable housing, but it's a very specific definition. And what I want to point out on this slide is that anything below market rate is not necessarily affordable housing in New Canaan. We have, because of our incomes and the land costs and the home values, a pretty high value of market rate homes. And things that are 80% of state median income fall far below that. And there's actually, I think, a fairly sizable gap, if my numbers are right, between what is technically affordable housing and what is market rate housing. I point this out because I think it's something we need to be mindful of. It's not where the conversation is going tonight, but I think as we have future conversations about inclusion and diversity and in terms of our housing stock in town, we really need to think about how to fill that gap between what's technically affordable and what is market rate. And there's been, you know, as you guys know, 830G, there's regulations, there's subsidies for the fully affordable housing. And to my knowledge, there's not any of that for this, what I'm going to call the gap between affordable and market rate. So it's going to require some real creative solutions on our part to figure out going forward how to fill that gap. And I'm hopeful that maybe as we work on the 830J affordable housing plan that we're required to do, maybe that's an area where we can tackle this. Next slide. So I'm not going to go too long on this slide, but I just wanted to give you a little background on where our tools come from. And they come from state statutes, and this is a list, I think it's all of them. But the ones that I could find that deal with affordable housing, it's a mixture of carrots and sticks. Probably the biggest and most well-known stick for us is 830G, which requires communities to have, provide at least 10% of their housing units as deed restricted affordable units and sets up a land use appeal process if your community doesn't have that, which basically allows the developer to go around your local zoning regulations if they want to build affordable housing. So that's kind of the monster that we're always fighting against and where a lot of our efforts go when it comes to affordable housing. Next slide. So after the last meeting, Lynn sent out the report from 2011 that I was speaking of. It's also on the town's, on the planning commission's website under old studies. And I hope you guys were able to take a look at it. That was really what I used as a starting point when it comes to, you know, where we head with affordable housing. And so these, this bulleted list is primarily taken from that report. The first four items in green are things that we're already doing or have done. And Art spoke to most of those last month. We have set up what we call an affordable housing trust fund, which takes a permitting fee every time someone comes in and pulls a permit and sets the money aside into a fund that's specifically used for creation, maintenance, and rehabilitation of affordable housing. And again, I'm using that in the strict 80% of state median income. We have the Housing Authority, and they have been working really hard to build affordable units at Millport and Canaan Parish, which is currently under construction. We've established moratorium for 830G and hope to continue to be able to reestablish that. So those are sort of the good things that we've been doing. In red is the incentive housing zone program. And I put it in red because the report from 2011 basically evaluated whether that program would be a good fit for New Canaan and decided that it would not. So for the time being, I'm crossing it off our list of things to consider. And then the other four bullets are, I think, you know, where conversations still need to be had. I'm going to come back to inclusionary zoning because that's where I want to focus tonight. So I'm going to quickly go through the last three, just in case you're not familiar with what these tools are. The third from the bottom is about establishing a community land trust or a housing trust, which would acquire and manage land or units and make them deed restricted affordable units. And so it would be done by a nonprofit, and they would manage this portfolio of units and keep track of, you know, who's coming and going and which ones are available and make sure that everyone who is applying to live in them is, you know, meeting the income regulations. We talked on our call with Scott and David a little bit about that possibility. And, you know, my experience is that it's usually done in a larger community. David threw out that it's usually done in places where the land costs are less than they are here. We'd have to have a very well endowed nonprofit to be running any sort of community land trust for affordability in New Canaan. So I don't think it's awful, but I think it's a challenging one. The next one is extending affordability deed restrictions on existing units when they expire. This is kind of a creative, out-of-the-box solution. So when, when a unit is declared affordable, there's a deed restriction on it. And in the case of 830G, those deed restrictions are for 40 years. And so the purpose of this would be at the end of that 40-year timeframe, could we renegotiate with the developer to re-up that deed restriction for another period of time? And there's some questions about this, even if we could get them to agree to that, would this help us in terms of the moratorium? So there's more to explore on that one. And then the last bullet is to look for other public land for the Housing Authority to build additional assisted units on. And so, you know, that's out there to consider. Oh, next slide, sorry. I'm trying to change the slides and I can't do it. Two other things I heard at our meeting last month that I just wanted to throw on here regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was the option that maybe we want to increase the fee that we charge for that and put into that fund for affordable housing. And then also a comment about using tax abatement as an incentive. That last one's not something that I was as familiar with. David enlightened me that it's used a lot in New York City and that we could use it here. So it's something, again, that we can keep on the list to investigate. Next slide. All right, so the purpose of tonight, though, I want to talk about inclusionary zoning. And for those who aren't familiar with this tool, inclusionary zoning is, would be a regulatory approach that we would use at our zoning ordinance. And there's a couple of ways we could do it that we'll talk about later. Where as part of a private development project, we require, require a certain number of units to be provided as affordable. And in exchange for that, we would provide some sort of bonuses. It could be density bonuses, height, coverage. So that's the general concept. And this is not necessarily a, you know, this is not a new concept. This is something that's actually being done around, all around us, Stanford, Norwalk, Greenwich, Westport. I think I missed one, but, you know, Darien. They all have some version of inclusionary zoning. And so the reason I wanted to focus on this is because I think there's a couple of upsides to this for us. Number one, it takes the sole responsibility of developing affordable units off of the Housing Authority and shares it with the private sector. Secondly, it would disperse affordable units around town rather than concentrating them in single developments like Canaan Parish or Millport. And lastly, it would ensure that as we're building new units, and this is something that I've learned from Art, and I'm sure he can talk more about it if people need an explanation. But as we're building new units in town, we're making sure that we're increasing the numerator of our 830G calculations in addition to the denominator, so that we're staying somewhat up to date with providing additional affordable units and not just adding market rate units and then being way behind in terms of the 10% that we're supposed to be providing with 830J. So that's why I wanted to focus on that. So next slide. All right, so this is the last one I'm going to talk through, and then I really want to take a break for a conversation from you guys. But so these are my ideas on what inclusionary zoning could look like in New Canaan. And based on my research, it seemed like there's, that these eight questions are, would at least, the answers to them would provide a pretty solid framework or backbone in terms of where we want to go, you know, with what this would look like. And then there's, like I said, different options in terms of the format, which I'll talk about next. But so for the sake of this evening, I'm going to hopefully somewhat quickly get through these questions and what I've answered here in red and explain my thought process. But then I really want to open it up to you guys and get your thoughts about what, you know, how you would answer these questions, what inclusionary zoning would look like, or even just what questions you have about it that maybe we can answer tonight. All right, so the first question is, should the provision of these affordable units be optional or mandatory? And looking at the regulations around us, I've seen it done both ways. My gut is that at this point in time, just given the political climate, given the financial and real estate climate they're in, that mandatory is probably the way to go. I think if something had been done back in 2011 when the Housing Report recommended that we do inclusionary zoning, maybe optional would have been an option. But I think now that mandatory is, and what I mean by mandatory, I should explain, is that if you come in and you want to develop multifamily units in our town, a certain number of those would be required to be affordable. And then in exchange, yes, you'd be eligible for density bonuses or coverage bonuses or height bonuses, however we decide to do that. Optional is more of, okay, well, you have that, if you want to build multifamily, you have an option of adding affordable units in exchange for these things, but you don't have to require, like, you're not required to provide them. And so that's, that's the difference there. The next question is, what number of units do the affordability requirements kick in? And in terms of other ordinances, it seems to be somewhere between five and 10 units. I think Stanford is 10. Greenwich and Darien, maybe five units. I talked with Lynn and just based on what's going on at the state level, the Senate Bill 1024, we thought that four units might be a good option for us. I mean, number one, we don't get a lot of huge multifamily developments in New Canaan. And number two, if Senate Bill 1024 does go through in some capacity, it could require that we allow 50% of the land within a half mile of our downtown transit station to provide four units as of right. And so if we're going to see a surge in that type of development, it seems reasonable that maybe that's the threshold at which we want to start getting some affordable units out of it. So after, so if we stuck with four units as the threshold, then the question becomes, well, what percentage of units after that are provided as affordable? A lot of the ordinances I looked at require a certain percent. So probably the most common I saw was at five units, you have to provide 20% of them as affordable. So that would be one unit out of five that is then required to be affordable. And talking with David and Scott, we also are toying around with a tiered approach. Because smaller, smaller sized developments, it's not as feasible to provide those affordable units. And the way that the regulations I've seen are written, if you have a fractional number of units that you provide, so let's say you're supposed to provide six units and that, that's like 2.1 units that are affordable, you have to round up. It would actually be like one point something, and you'd have to round up. So you'd have to provide two units if you're building six units. And if you're building 10 units, you'd also have to provide two units of affordable development. And so maybe there's some sort of tiered approach where this is just an example. But if you're building four to seven units, you provide one that's affordable. If you're building eight to 11 units, you provide two that are affordable and so on, so that it's at least somewhat sensitive to the cost of doing this. Question number four is basically, what should the approval process look like? My initial response was based off of this 2011 study where whoever the steering committee was that was advising this consultant did not want to go forth with the incentive, the incentive housing zone at the state level. And part of the reason for that was because they'd be required to accept applications through a site plan process. We tend to like to do the special permit process here in New Canaan. And so that's why I initially went with that. I think that doing, allowing inclusionary zoning to happen without a special permit would be a huge incentive for developers to take advantage of it. I'm not sure if that's something the commission is comfortable with, but I think that's definitely a conversation we need to have. My initial thoughts on where, number five, where we would have this be allowed in our town was the multifamily apartment and retail and business zones that are within a half mile of the train station and also on public water and sewer. You know, this is where we're going to see the most multifamily, the most pressure for multifamily development and probably the most multifamily development. It doesn't really make sense, in my opinion, to start in a single family zone. So this seems like a good starting point to see if this inclusionary zoning can work and how many units it's able to garner for us. A big deal in the inclusionary zoning is what type of bonuses do we provide? If you were able to look at the model or sample regulations in the 2011 report, it did provide increases in density, height, and/or coverage. And that's basically where I was starting from too, and that seems to be pretty common, that you would use those sort of as the incentives to get the affordable units in exchange. Number seven is that you have to provide some sort of outlet for people who, for whatever reason, can't provide these affordable units onsite, especially if you're using a mandatory, mandatory inclusionary zoning process. And so the two options for, for giving this outlet would be to provide for affordable units being built off-site. And the other option is to allow for a payment in lieu of the affordable units. And in our case, I think the payment in lieu makes more sense. What I read is that the off-site option is best in places where you might have varying land costs. So it might be cheaper to build the affordable units in one part of town and not in another. I think our land costs are fairly stable across New Canaan. So allowing developers to pay probably into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund instead of providing the affordable units is, I think, the way to go. I think there's a lot of questions we have to, would have to answer about what does that look like? What is the fee? You know, when do we allow them to do that? But, you know, starting point, I think, payment in lieu is a good option. And then the last question is, what is the duration of affordability? And this gets into the deed restriction that would be placed on the property for those affordable units. State regulation 830G requires, for projects that come through the 830G process, 40-year deed restriction. Originally, I was thinking something less, like 30 years could be more enticing. And so that's, that's where I landed at, 30 to 40 years. So I'm going to stop there and open it up for questions and comments and conversation.
Yeah, hi, it's John Chris speaking. I thought there's a good presentation. I thought I went over the many options we have, including the 830G issues where we're dealing with a few thoughts. I'm never much one for raising taxes or fees, but somebody's going to end up paying for all this. And so I think looking at the fee that's assessed for the housing that goes with the housing fund should be looked at, not only the level, but also what's covered and not covered and perhaps tiering it and some thoughts on that. It could be expanded to include all permits, including if you're just doing an interior renovation, which is not covered now by the fee. That could go into it. In addition, if a permit is adding housing to the town, which increases our bogey for 830G, that that permit be, have a much higher level of fee because it will increase the challenge we have in maintaining our 830G exemption. So let's say there's a subdivision, a legal subdivision, you have an eight acre, you cut into two, four acres and build a house on the other four acre, that that would be charged a higher fee to recognize the additional housing unit. I think also, as far as the mandating affordable housing in multifamily developments is, seems reasonable to me. And having it tiered for larger developments seems appropriate too. As far as the partials, I'm going to call it, let's say, just for lustrous purposes, we say that 20% of the units have to be affordable. But you can't have a third of a unit and so forth. But we would do for partials, if this is possible, would be to assess a fee on a prorata basis, which will go into the housing fund. And that fee would recognize the actual cost of building an affordable housing unit, which is what about $450,000, kind of sort of more or less in that area, somewhere in the ballpark. But an appropriate fee so that it would go there. Whether you could do a total fee in lieu of an actual unit, I think that's something to discuss because one of the things I think that may be, we may be faced with is that so-called scatter site affordable housing is an issue that many people have pushed for as opposed to have it all concentrated in a few geographic areas. To the extent we mandated in a specific development, you'll get the scatter site just by, by the nature of the construction. And that's something that we may want to, may want to consider. I think we also need to think about where things are likely to happen. So for example, the police station, there's talk about building a new police station or tearing down the curb, one building a new one there. If we, they don't build a new one there and they put it somewhere else, then that town-owned real estate on a state highway is up for grabs. Maybe that becomes affordable housing. It's right next to affordable housing now. And so we also have those called industrial buildings on Pine Street, which seem to be in play. And there's that very large lot just below it to the south, which is vacant and has been for a while. I would suggest that's not vacant by accident. And what the owners are thinking about doing is essentially cutting into the hill and merging it with those, whatever is built where those industrial buildings are and have greater height because you're on a hill and you have nice apartments overlooking the park. I wouldn't be surprised if something like that is ever suggested. And that would be a very large development and fairly high one too, given the hill. And so, and finally, you know, we have the doctor's office that's on East Avenue, which is also a state highway, which is right next to current long-term housing. You know, maybe that becomes long-term housing, that whole area. And so I think we want to think about what are the likely locations and what do we think about that when we come up with some plans? But I think in broad strokes, the things that Krista outlined are ones that would be in general agreed with.
Thank you so much, John. Those are great points, and I took some notes. In terms of increasing the fee to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's something that we talked a little bit about on our call with Scott and David. And I'm, I'm wondering if either of you want to talk to that or if you want me to try and talk to it.
When we, when we let David go, as David's not actually a resident of New Canaan and is volunteering his time off in order to be here with us, David knows a lot more than I do. Why don't we let David jump in here so we can get back to his family?
Okay. You're referring to increasing the amount of fees on permits?
Yes.
Well, you know, I think the issue is that the fee percentages are fairly high as it stands right now, you know, compared to other communities. So it's just a matter of you assessing how much of a dampening effect that might have on the building industry in New Canaan. And I think Scott, that's what you and I had talked about, if I remember right.
Yep. But I mean, this is a classic economics problem, and there's not a great series of solutions. And unfortunately, the state has focused us on having to deal with a specific affordable housing goal that is unattainable. And it's actually even hard to go ahead and meet like the 830G requirements that, you know, to get a moratorium. And that doesn't, of course, solve so many of the other needs inside of town. And in order to even try to address those needs, we're hurting the natural order of things. I mean, there's a lot of people moving into town right now that are stretching. I mean, you talk to any of the realtors and you've got these bidding wars at the low end of the, of the market, and people are really stretching. And when they go to remodel their home, you don't want them to be stuck there going, you know, I can't remodel my home because I have an affordable housing clause fee that ends up, you know, making so I can't actually do something on my own property.
So just, you know, to that point, Scott, I've noticed in looking at some of the legislative bills, and there are a multitude of them that are, you know, going across five commissions regarding zoning regulations that a lot of them actually reference, I think it's 839A, in their definition of affordable housing, which instead of looking at the state median income, looks at the municipality's median income. So it would allow a lot more flexibility between that gap between market rate and affordable housing if we're talking specific to New Canaan. So just, that's one thing. Found interesting, the other part is, you know, just going back to what Krista, you were saying about 1024 and how that I think dovetails with some of the things that you outlined in the presentation. The one thing is on that last slide, what 1024 would require is 10%, affordable units at a minimum, over 10 units or above. And they also talk about in terms of density, that within that 50, within that half-mile radius, you know, 50% of potentially developable land within that half-mile radius of a transit or to development, that in one-acre zoning, they would require a minimum of 15 units of density within that one acre as well.
Yes. And I mean, I will say that it's hard, I mean, I find it hard. On one hand, it's like, whoa, what is the state going to do and how do we react to that? And that's one piece. And then the other piece is, well, how do we just keep our heads down and do what's right for New Canaan? And so I'm trying to merge kind of both of those things in what I'm presenting to you, but probably more, how do we just do what's right for New Canaan? But I'm still trying to keep that in mind as well. So just so you know.
So I'd add a couple of perspectives if I could as an investor. First, I have never seen a unit of affordable housing developed in the last decade anywhere in New England with a unit cost of less than $450,000. Most in major urban areas are closer to 650 or 700. That's a common cost figure. So the notion that we can, you know, get a payment or an in-loop payment is very difficult. Krista, I think your summary was excellent. I think that there are two perspectives we should offer. Number one, we need to focus immediately on any building with 10 or more units. Because the real problem that we have now is, has been caused, for example, by the view. We allowed 124 units in the denominator without getting even one going into the numerator. Had we had a 10% inclusionary requirement, 12 of those units would have had a 99-year Lura on them or a minimum of 50- or 40-year Lura, which is standard. And we need to focus, I think, first on those industrial properties and establishing a, if there's 10 units or more, and stop this being New Canaan's problem, we need to identify it as a state mandate and be very clear that the state 830G requirement is 10%. And we should just say to people, if you're coming in here with a request of 10 or more units, you need to provide a prorata number of 99-year or perhaps 40-year, but Lura-eligible units. We don't necessarily need to focus, by the way, on providing We don't necessarily need to focus, by the way, on providing concessions on density or anything else. The real cost when you build affordable housing is the cap on the revenue per unit for the lifetime, not, not the cost per unit. And it's the foregone cash flow that the developer has to provide for. But if he can provide for a, if you give a little bit of extra density, put a few units in, he can manage his revenue stream so that it's not disastrous. And finally, and Krista, this goes one, one additional thing. My experience over twenty years in this space is that there are actually relatively few tax abatements given to affordable housing. The reason for that is that communities react to tax abatements very strongly. And the same project, if it's going to pay at least close to market tax rates, is accepted much more readily by a community than if they think not only is it low income, but it is not going to pay appropriate in, uh, property taxes associated with actual use. So the, you know, as we begin philosophy here, the challenge that we face as a group is caused by the state, not by us. And we should be very clear with developers that we need to react to this ten percent mandate as if it's an absolute requirement. And if we begin, for example, with, we don't want to penalize somebody who's trying to do three or four units in town. But if you have a major developer coming in here with a sixty unit project, we should make sure that they at least don't make our numerator denominator calculation worse by coming into town. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. That's, that's really helpful.
Anything I would like to make the numerator better, suppose with just keeping up. Because as you mentioned, the view issue becomes a, a deficit issue we'll need to deal with for eight thirty G.
So, so Art and Dave, so Art and David, what, what's the developer equation? I mean, at ten percent, is this affordable at twenty percent? What's, what? How do you work the equation as to how much more do you have to provide the developer to make up for the affordable housing?
Well, you know, the first thing I want to just speak to because it's a source of confusion. I, I did a, I, I'm not a professional planner at the current moment. I'm a real estate developer. But I do have a master's in city planning and I did work for a professional planner at one point in my career. So take what I'm saying in that vein, but I did a research paper years ago on inclusionary zoning. And one of the legal issues with inclusionary zoning that I encourage you guys to check with counsel about is that usually in the court cases that have occurred about inclusionary zoning, fee and lieu has been seen as a requirement in an inclusionary zoning text. Because courts have found that without it, it's considered a taking. And so, you know, it could have changed in the ten years since I wrote that paper. But I do encourage you guys to check with counsel about that. And the taking question also comes into play when you talk about what percentage of affordable is reasonable. I mean, you know, just to take an extreme example, if you made a reg that said all units have to be affordable and applied it broadly over the town, the court would wisely see that as being a taken. So is twenty percent a taking? It, it's impossible to know. Ten percent has been standard in a lot of communities for a long time now. And I think that's widely accepted. I think when you get to twenty or thirty percent, there's definitely some questions about whether a court might see that as taking. But, you know, again, I would, I would ask counsel about that.
Question on two, two points you made, sir. Regarding fee and lieu, in other words, the developer can say, I'll either designate these two apartments as affordable or I will write you a check that's appropriate, but it's the developer's choice. Is that what you're saying?
Um, in many towns, it's the developer's choice. I think there are some circumstances where you could allow it, but have some requirements about why it's happening. But those have to be reasonable requirements. It, I, I think, I mean, again, my information may be outdated, but when I looked at this issue, it, it really had to be an actual choice.
There is a third option too, John, just to answer that.
Yes, sir.
For example, if a developer wants to provide a unit in another locale within Stanford, they can do it, but it then gets the Laura attached. That's okay, because if you're in Stanford, right, and you've got an alternative, you know, and they're building in the, you know, Dolphin Cove, right? And they don't want to turn those into high, low income units, they can provide an alternative unit as well as a fee.
I think in, in our town, we're, I, I just looking around at the real estate, we're more likely to have a couple bigger developments, you know, again, we have the Pine Street issue. We have Old Cross and Viti, that toothpaste is coming out of the tube. And, you know, we have the situation with the fire department, excuse me, police department. I don't know how that's going to sort out. And so as, as Krista options in her paper, that if you have somewhat a larger development, let's say twenty five, thirty units, you would have a higher bogey as far as you know, level of, of, of affordability. And that would strike me as, as reasonable because I think we're going to get some larger developments. And that would also help us do some catch up on some other areas too. So I, I would be very sympathetic to that option.
So I have a couple of questions on this front in terms of, you know, we keep on talking about the idea of our goal of ten percent and, and closing that gap is, does the town get credit for, for moving and closing, moving towards that gap? Because it seems that it's unlikely that we'll ever reach that gap. And I just want to make sure I understand. Is there, is our goal to close it or is our goal to make it look like we're attempting to close it? Or is it to just increase it as much as we can? Let's see, what's the consensus there?
So Chris, I, I'm going to take a whack at that from a public policy point of view. Virtually no municipality of the one hundred seventy four in the state of Connecticut will ever get to ten percent of defined affordable.
Sure.
The stuff that we have done in town is actually quite good relative to getting there. That's what the eight thirty G moratoria provide.
The five years, yeah.
Yeah. And really for us, honestly, as a philosophy point of view, I think what we need to be doing is saying, A, we can't manage what we don't measure. We need to measure our units every single month and be accurate with that. And be able to demonstrate that we are striving to get close to ten. We'll never get there. But hopefully via moratoria, we will be able to prevent an overriding damaging impact. You know, the ultimate.
No, I just, I was trying to understand because I mean, oh, go ahead.
The ultimate silver bullet has always been the fear that somebody will come in and put in sixty units of housing. The interesting twist about that is A, it never happens because the unit cost won't work. And B, if that did happen, you won't have an eight thirty, you won't have a ten percent problem anymore.
Right. And, and so I guess my, my point being is we keep on talking about the numerator denominator, but it seems like it doesn't matter what denominator is because we'll never get there anyway. So I just, I just want to understand. You know, I guess in theory it'd be nice to, to increase the ratios, but we're never going to get there. So, because the reason I was going there is because I was reading a couple of articles coming into this and, and we keep on talking about unit ratios, but some of the articles speak to the concept of square footage ratios. Because, you know, not all units are created equal insofar as desirability and cost. So whether it be a one bedroom, a two bedroom or a three bedroom, you know, some of the articles I've read spoke to the idea of ten percent of square footage. And I was interested from a development perspective, you know, for example, if we were to, you know, reduce the parking requirement for a development that had fifteen units on one acre on Pine Street, does that mean they could get a couple of extra one bedrooms in there? And from a, from a policy perspective, from a town perspective, do we look to, to drive, you know, unit mix? And I, I know we have the, the schoolhouse apartments as well, where we're, we're looking to drive an age outcome. So I know there's a different bogey, so to speak, that we're, we're going after, but is there, have we reached a consensus on unit mix and square footage and?
The, the, the state measures don't give you any credit for square foot. It's only unit count. And in almost all parts of the country, part of the way that people dealt with this is to get senior housing, which frequently is also low income by the definition of people who live there. And frequently you have one bedrooms or apartment, studio apartments that are perfect for seniors on fixed incomes that help to qualify within that range. There's no accession that I've ever seen for square footage. It's only unit count when you go into the eight thirty G measurement.
Okay. Cause that, that's super, because if you think about penciling out these units, so if you have a three bedroom unit that you're going for two and a half million, or you have a one bedroom unit, that's unit cost is much lower than the units pencil out differently depending if they're, they're like for like or, or, or not. So I just wanted to understand that. And the other question I had was income restrictions and durability of that. So in the articles I read that one of the, one of the gotchas was a person that qualified would need only earn that income for a set period of time, but then could go out of that range, you know, say they, they end up earning a lot more, then they would actually, you know, work against that concept of affordability within that construct. And I was wondering if there's anything in the regs that would would enforce that durability of income.
In, in most cases, once somebody qualifies for a unit, they can never be evicted, even if they go over income. However, in most states, and this is true in New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, Connecticut, once a unit is certified and has a land use restriction on the deed, they give you credit for that unit, even if a family or an individual goes over income. The classic example of that is if you have somebody with a low income tendency and the kids grow up and go to college and come back and make a good living, they could still live in the unit. They will be over income, which quite frequently happens, but you still get credit for that as a low income unit as long as the land use restriction is on the deed.
Okay. So it's, it's serving, it's serving the, the credit, but it's not necessarily serving the, the town need necessarily in terms of serving. Okay. Got it. Understood.
There's actually, I mean, there's a subtle benefit that, I mean, like at Millport, we have people, it's very difficult because we're mainly at sixty percent of income, which means we can only serve people who are make fifty six thousand, seven hundred dollars a month, a year. Those are the only people who are allowed in. But as people's income goes up, they're allowed to stay until, David, is it about double the income that we start getting into trouble and they no longer qualify?
Yeah. And, you know, that's never happened.
Yeah. And, and at that point, the rent goes up to market rent. So at that point, it's, they're not necessarily incentivized to stick around. They may very well decide to go somewhere else. But we did get stuck as you do a transition. If those people can't be kicked out. So if they actually want to come back to the apartment when we're done with the renovation, we lose that apartment in our account. And that actually happened to us at, uh, actually, I think we managed to just avoid it, David, or did it?
Yeah, we did avoid it, but it was dicey there. Yeah.
And it cost us. I mean, we had to pay people off in order not to come back. Just another way they make it easy to go ahead and do affordable housing.
So, so I was just going to say, because I know we have, we're wrapping up in a few minutes, that for, for Krista and Art, if you needed a, if you need any help, whether it be grunt work, you know, just data crunching or anything else, I'd be happy to help out if you want to reach out to me with anything you guys are doing.
Thanks. That's a, it's a good transition to the last two slides, James. Lynn, could you bring the presentation back up?
Sure.
So I've always felt like we don't end up having enough time for conversation in these meetings and I'm sorry, but just feasibly, we can't make you, we, we don't want to make you stay any longer, start any earlier, go any later, any of those things. So this is hopefully the beginning of the conversation, not the end. So if you had questions or comments or things that, you know, you didn't get to say tonight, let, but let's hope that we have plenty of time going forward. So what I want to leave you guys with tonight is I think there's two options for how we move forward with inclusionary zoning. And I'm going to present you with both of them. So you can look at them and, and play around with them and see which one feels better to you. One option would be to do an overlay zone. I call it an inclusionary housing overlay zone and that would require a text amendment, which would add a new section to Article Five of our regulations where we have the special zones. It would also require a map change by the commission to apply it in the areas that we decide are appropriate. I listed here, you know, what I'd come up with, but I heard some other ideas tonight. The upside of, of going this pathway is that I think it would really call attention to this regulation. It would be very visible both in our ordinance and on the zoning map, you would see that these properties have this inclusionary housing overlay zone on them. The downside is that the map change and text amendment process can be lengthy, especially, you know, dependent, we're, we're going to have to open it up for public hearing and all of that. And so, you know, we'd have to go through that process. The other option that Lynn and I have discussed is to just make a straight text revision to Section seven point six. And for those of you who aren't familiar, seven point six is where we capture the Affordable Housing Trust Fund fee through the permit process. It also includes, I think, some, some brief regulations on if an eight thirty G project came through, what types of information we would need from them. But we could add another section to that, Section seven point six that talks about inclusionary zoning. And so therefore it wouldn't actually be a new zoning district. It would just say in these areas or these zoning districts that already exist, we want to kind of apply this regulation as well. So I think that that could possibly be a quicker pathway and the downside is that it would be a little bit more buried in our zoning ordinance. It wouldn't be visible on the map. You know, the town planner would have to point people to this section when they came through with a multifamily project and say, you know, this, this is what we're requiring from you. So after the meeting tonight, possibly tomorrow, if not tomorrow, Thursday, I will have Lynn email you these two options. Because I feel like people might get confused. I've labeled them option one and option two. So hopefully, you know, you can keep them clear that these are two different options. And what I'm asking you guys to do is to review them. Get back to Lynn with which, which pathway you would prefer to see us go down, whether it's the overlay zone or just changes to seven point six. And then also obviously any specifics you have in terms of the language, the, those questions that I went over earlier, if you would answer them differently, you know, that bears out and how the language is written. So get back to Lynn with that stuff. And I'll circle back with her and get that and come back to you guys in April so that we could hopefully have an option that we focus on and talk about the actual language. Does that?
That would be some commentary on your estimates and staff's estimates of, you know, pros and cons and so forth. You'd listed to some of them right now. To have them in writing would at least help me. So that would be useful. And I have a question, our eight thirty J, when does that do the new and improved version?
Twenty twenty two, but I don't know the date, Lynn. Lynn, you're on mute.
Lynn, you're on mute. Lynn.
Thank you. Sorry. We have to do it by July of twenty twenty two. So it's.
It's due July twenty two.
Yeah. So we're going to start, we're, I have to send out our and we're going to start doing that soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about what's coming at you and what we need back from you by the April meeting?
Hey Krista, just real quick. I wouldn't use the half mile and everybody think about this for coming back. I wouldn't use the half by a limitation. I would go where the development potentially can go. So I would think of it more on a zone basis. And look, if, if ten twenty four or something else gets passed, we, we're going to have to deal with it. But I wouldn't be driven by my own personal view what those people are proposing.
I would agree with that because I stated early on, you know, if you look at Cross Viti would seem to be an area, we have the Pine Street area, we have what happened, well, what will ever happen to the, to the police station. So I think we've got to play it as it lays and look at where we think development would or should occur in town and take it from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would.
To that point.
I would go back to what you said, which is, you know, do we try to follow the state or legislation or do we what, do what's right for New Canaan? You know, I would go with the second. Sorry to interrupt.
No, I was just going to say in, in response to what John Chris was saying, you know, those locations that you keep bringing up, you know, that may then merit using the overlay zone and not overlaying it on specific zoning districts, but on specific geographic areas where we're expecting to see development. So just, that's what comes to mind when you say that.
I think one of the issues for the commission is, you know, where do you want, where do you want development to occur? Where? And I, I think the commission would probably have views on that. And this would be a way to express that. Particularly since some of these developments may be on the large side, including vertical. And that's a function of really, you know, what are the adjacencies? Is it on a hill? Is it not on a hill and so forth? All of those issues are ones that I know this commission has considered when looking at special permits and many other applications. And it may very well be appropriate to have that in mind when thinking about affordable housing locations. Thinking about affordable housing locations in town.
Could I just offer the half mile radius concept again, just for a sec, though? If I were a developer. And I caught wind of the fact that. An overlay zone was created in a narrow area where one perceived that there might be. Development. I think I'd have a lot of fun with that when I was jumping on why you can't do it. Whereas if you take a half mile concept and say, this is consistently applied throughout the town. Again, I'm not a lawyer. But I'd be thinking that's a much more sustainable approach than saying, oh, I. If you, if you go to these three blocks, then you got a problem.
Well, so this one last point, I'm sorry. Since the town owns, I think, fifty six or fifty seven buildings, so to speak, but you know, many of them are not really actually large functional. Buildings. Is there anything that people can think of that? The town has a liability for a given structure. They want to figure out how to convert it or sell it, some way dispose of it. That could be ten, be potential sources of. Development in this discussion.
That's a good thought.
John, John Chris mentioned the NCPD building.
Yeah.
So I think in terms of looking at that, the building, there was a. The town had a building commission where they reviewed each of the fifty seven. Properties and. Given overview and planned use of those. And I will try to get that. That study and I'll pass it along to Lynn to pass it along to others. And, you know, maybe I'm happy to, with others, you know, take a look through that list and see if anything makes sense. That would be beneficial to the town and beneficial to working towards eight thirty G.
The other consideration is, well, not. It wouldn't be buildings, it would be land, but.
Yeah.
You know, we do have the railroad lot and we have a pretty massive parking lot at Thomas Hill. So depending on. You know, public, private partnerships, you could potentially see some very. You know, unit rich development there with the town under. Having the land lease. So there's some interesting things there too.
All right, I'm going to cut us off here because it's six fifty four and I think Lynn and at least John. Need to do a couple of things to get ready for the next meeting and let all the right people in. So. Thank you guys so much for coming and. Like I said, send Lynn your comments once you get our email and we'll get back to you in April.
Thank you, Krista.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Lynn, we can stay on. Thank you, David. Thank you, Scott. Lynn, we can stay on, Chris, right?
Yes, you can stay on.
Okay.
It's the same link. So just, I'm going to pause the recording for right now.